Engaged in the democratic process. When we arrived, nearly 100% of eligible residents voted and often government meetings were packed. Consistent with that. We're working. Peninsula had a proud tradition of allowing its candidates to present their positions and to be heard by its residents. When some of us recently discovered the potential for a League of Women Voters Forum, and that someone was happy, we proposed a need about reestablishing this practice, hopefully as a once again time honored approach. In the process of working with the different League of Women Voter Groups, we learned the following outline. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots political organization working to protect and expand voter rights and ensure everyone is represented in our democracy through active and educated participation. Since its founding in 1920, the League has worked to fulfill this mission by engaging with voters at every step in the voting process from registration to casting a ballot. For decades, the League's nonpartisan voter guide, vote411.org, has been a trusted source of voting and election information for voters across the country. From voter registration to sponsoring candidate forums, the League is dedicated to providing voters with all of the available information they need to cast and inform, vote, and reelect. So now let us thank those who made the logistics of this evening possible, starting with Andrew Green, Director of Voter Services for the League of Women Voters of the Akron area, and the other volunteers who are here to serve us. We'd also like to thank and introduce the Hudson and Northern Summit League of Women Moderators leading this evening's event. Jennifer Battin, PhD, an education specialist in the field of conflict management and peacebuilding, providing training, facilitation, and curriculum development for schools, higher education government, and CSOs in 23 countries, counties, countries, 23 countries. And Becky Suzani, I pronounced that correctly, Suzani, a licensed independent social worker at Western Reserve Academy, it's my alma mater. Yes. I will now turn the party over to our League representatives to introduce the candidates and to present the organization of this evening's event. We hope that it will be valuable for the candidates, for our residents, and for our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Joseph. So, welcome, everyone. My name is Jen Battin, and I'll be facilitating this evening. I have the League of Women Voters Hudson and the Akron area. So what we will do is we first have our candidates from Peninsula. And the how the agenda will work is each of the candidates will have two minutes for an opening, and then after that, we'll be fielding the questions. Each candidate will have one minute. Each candidate will answer the exact same question until everyone answers the same questions. Because we only have one person from Boston Township that will be with us following the Peninsula candidates, we're going to go 6:30 till about 8:00. With those questions, if we run out of questions, we'll conclude early with the Peninsula candidates. And each of the candidates will have two minutes each to give concluding remarks. Following that, we'll begin with our Boston Township candidates. We do have one candidate, so part of the guidelines for League of Women Voters is that if a candidate would like to participate, are you not able to be here? Sorry.
You have your...
Yeah. Okay. If the participants... So if the candidates are not able to be here, we are able to read a statement of up to two minutes. So we do have one candidate from Peninsula that I'll read their statement, and one from Boston Township that is combined. So, thank you. So what we'd like you to do, we have note cards, this is how we're gathering questions. If, as you're hearing things, if you would like to ask a question, how we're doing that is because we have a large, we have a full house at the Happy Problem, as I call it, you can just raise your hand and someone from League will pass those out. We also have pens, and we're taking those questions, and then we'll be given those. How we decide which questions we'll field, let's say we have 100 questions, but only time for 10. What we'll do is we will take the ones that we have the most questions about. For instance, when we do facilitation for school boards, frequently there are questions about levees, right? There might be 25 questions about a levy, we take those first. All right? Till we run out of time. So the questions that we've received so far, we assume are for Peninsula candidates. If you would like to have your question just be for Boston, please make a little note on there whether it's Peninsula or Boston from here on out. Okay? All right, great. Thank you so much. The other thing, I just remember to, with my phone, to turn it on to silent or vibrate, if we could all please do that. I myself frequently forget, so that would be great. All right? Thanks so much. All right. And by the way, we are overseen by Abe Lincoln in the other room, and we got George Washington watching us on this Democratic engagement evening, so we're in good company. Let's go ahead and get started. I'll begin in alphabetical order, and we'll start with Candidate Cole. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's William Cole. My name's William Cole. I'm running for village council because I really care about our community and the direction it's headed. A little bit about me, my wife and I have been married almost 20 years. She was born and raised here. We moved back to Peninsula five and a half years ago. My kids live here, my grandkids live here. I served 12 years in the military with two deployments overseas, the Persian Gulf in Somalia. After that, I was a team surfer 24 years, where I learned hard work and determination helps get things done. And that's me.
Thank you. Thank you, Candidate Cole. So Candidate Frank Hensley?
Well, hi, everyone. I am super excited to be here, and I thought I'd, I was thinking about like, how did I end up in a place where I'm running for some sort of, I'm running for election type of thing? That's really not my style, but I, when we first moved here, we bought a house on North Locust, have been renovating it for the last 10 years. And during that time of renovation, I went to a planning meeting, and I ended up sitting on the floor of the Peninsula Police Station. And I was actually super excited about that. It was Planning Commission was talking about the long range plan, we had just bought our house, and I was excited that I was in a village that, to Joseph's point, people cared about the community and preserving it. And since then, I've been going to council meetings, going to planning meetings, working on the area master plan, and I think I have a lot of, a lot of background to help continue forward. My background, I come from a family of, a lot of service, and I've always looked to volunteer. And my hope here, my hope is that I'm able to take the skills that I've learned 30 years in a corporate global company, where I've worked in almost every department. My job has always been to improve, to help facilitate people to get to the answers that they're looking for, strategic planning, and some other items. What I'm most interested in is getting more people in rooms like this, and I'm super encouraged by what I see here, because I think there's things on council that more people need to know about. So transparency, communication, and good decision making is what I stand for.
Super, thank you. Candidate Frank Hensley, Candidate Krasinski?
Hi. My name's Dan Krasinski. I married into Peninsula 36 years ago, raised two daughters, a granddaughter here. Really love this community. It's lived most of my adult life here. My experience is, I'm a corporate accountant, I'm a CPA. I retired two years ago from Cleveland Cliffs. I think that bringing a finance background on the council is beneficial to the village. I don't know what else to say. I did send a letter to everybody in town, so I think I'm repeating what I put in there. But I would really, I would appreciate your support. If you have any questions, I'll answer the questions when they come through.
Thank you, Candidate Krasinski. The other thing is, if folks, when you're, because we're recording this, I want to mention too, we are recording this, it will be on the League of Women Voters of Akron area website. So we do, and especially because something just started humming in the kitchen, be sure that you have the mics close to you so that everyone can hear, please. Okay? Thank you so much. In addition to that, after the evening concludes, for those who wish to stay a little bit longer, we've invited the candidates who are able to stay with you. If there isn't time for additional questions, you'll have an opportunity to engage with the candidates. Thank you. All right. So Candidate Patrick Naway. Thank you.
I'm John Naway. My wife and I moved to Peninsula six years ago. 30 years ago, I lived and rented in Peninsula on North Locust Street, so I was familiar with the area, loved the outdoors, so Peninsula is a natural being, you know, within the national park. I'm currently serving on council, filling a two and a half year term that had been vacated, so this is my first time running and asking for your votes. I've got 28 years' experience running a manufacturing beverage industry in northeast Ohio, so I'm familiar with regulations, bureaucracy, government regulations on the city, state, federal levels with, you know, EPA taxation, working with those offices, which has come in handy sitting on council. It's the first time I've been on any type of council before. My daughter attended Woodridge, graduated from there, is in college at Ohio University. We love living in Peninsula, the small town feel, the charm of it, and trying to keep that, and, you know, that's it.
Thank you, Candidate Naway. Candidate Nash?
Good evening. I'm Jim Nash. Been in Peninsula now 14 years. My wife and I, Joanne, moved into Del Road and built our home here. Always been in love with this area, growing up in northeast Ohio, been a northeast Ohio native, and just always wanted to live here. Every time I talk to people, they're just so excited about, oh, you live in Peninsula? We would love to do that. I love that kind of just general appreciation of this valley, and appreciation of the national park, and the railroad, and the river, and most of all, it's really the character of Peninsula. I look to maybe step into a role of council if it voted for, with the idea that we really need to work on evolving the culture of Peninsula to make sure it doesn't, we don't lose the character and the charm that we are all here for and we all love. I also think that to work on the master plan that has recently been submitted and adopted, that we all participated in, to make that happen with, with the input of the citizens on an ongoing basis, because everything's changed, everything changes. So I mean, you know, I, I really think we're, in front of us, we have a lot of really great opportunities to take advantage of the challenges and continue to evolve Peninsula from an infrastructure standpoint, from a character standpoint, and to make it what we all love about Peninsula. So I would appreciate your support.
Thank you, Candidate Nash, and Candidate Riggins.
Hello. I'm glad to see everybody here. I have to use my cheap sheet, I'll get everything in I want to say. I am Mo Riggins, candidate for Peninsula Council. Most of you know me from council, planning commission, and other town meetings, or at least from the articles I submit to the community news all the time. I've lived here for going on 50 years, my other half Marty back there is a third generation Peninsulaite, so I know this town pretty well. Residents have an absolute right to have a say about what goes on in Peninsula and to keep our families safe. Do we want Peninsula to become a party destination? Do we want more and bigger events and festivals without a comprehensive plan in place for traffic and parking problems? Do we want a more aggressive nightlife to attract even more tourists after dark, or even a brewery? If so, then these should be our decisions, not outside investors. And whatever our decisions are, they need to be protected by enforcing all regulations about favoritism or conflict of interest. This is council's job. Our wishes need to come first, not an afterthought. We can plan responsibly for future financial growth without sacrificing our neighborhoods or even our homes to commercial progress. We have a lot of sharp minds in this town, let's use them. There are rezoning decisions being made right now in council, which could be determined by December, before any new council members can even be seated. So we need to pay attention right now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Candidate Riggins. So we had, one of the rules is that if a candidate is unable to make it, that they can submit us an opening statement for up to two minutes. And so I will read that for you from Candidate Padrae. She states, "Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. While a prior commitment prevents me from attending tonight, my commitment to Peninsula has never been stronger. I'm Jody Padrae. Peninsula isn't just where I live, it's my home as it was for my parents and grandparents before me. I've watched our town evolve through generations, raised my own family here, and serve you on council and community boards. That connection gives me a deep understanding of the pulse of the community. I know which families have been here for decades, and many newcomers who chose Peninsula for the same reasons that we stay. And I know when something feels off, because I feel it too. This isn't just civic duty for me, this is protecting home." And I just want to make sure we're timing too, okay? "Over the past five weeks, I've knocked on more than 200 doors not to talk but to listen, and here's what you told me. You feel ignored. Residents are being drawn out while tourism traffic overwhelms our neighborhoods. You can't safely get out of your driveways. Speeding has become a serious public safety issue. Power outages keep disrupting your homes and businesses. Meanwhile, short term rentals are quietly transforming our village, and council silence has been deafening. You deserve accountability. Zoning regulations go unenforced, traffic laws are ignored, public records requests drag on for months. Emergency legislation has become routine bypassing the public process you're entitled to. Here's what I'll fight for: your voice at the table, a council member who listens first, acts second, reliable essential services pushing for solutions and accountability needed to end recurring power outages protecting Peninsula's character, smart planning decisions guided by resident priorities not outside pressure, enforcement that works, real consequences when our laws and codes are violated, transparency you can count on, timely public records, and an end to emergency legislation abuse. I've done the work, attending nearly every council and planning meeting, writing in our newspaper to keep residents informed, and walking your neighborhoods. Peninsula needs a council member who answers you, not special interests, not outside investors." She'll be your voice, Padrae. Woo! I tried to breathe, and also, she was reading, so sorry, Candidate Padrae, I missed a sentence at the end. Okay. So now, we'll take questions, all right? So again, what we're going to do is if you would like to ask a question, we already have a set of questions that Lead Women Voters is giving us here, we'll start with those. Each one will, each candidate will take the same questions, right? We'll start, one minute each. So we'll start because Candidate Cole actually started with giving the opening, we'll start with Candidate Frank Hensley with question number one. We rotate. All right. So, "Will you commit to take trainings on your role as a councilperson if elected or reelected, if those are offered?" Sure. So the question says, so, "If trainings are offered, will you commit to take trainings on your role as a councilperson if elected or reelected?"
Yes, most definitely. I believe in the training that's available right now, if you're not aware of it. It's not required that all council members take Sunshine Law training, which is not a big deal to take it, but it's very important to understand what you are allowed to do and not do, so that you're actually deliberating in public. And I'm a huge proponent of that. I'd take any training that would be offered.
Thank you. Thank you, Candidate Frank Hensley, Candidate Krasinski. And if you'd like me to repeat the question, just ask.
The quick answer is absolutely. I've already required as a CPA to take 40 hours' worth of training every year, including three hours' worth of ethics training, which is what, eight hours of today was part of that, and eight hours tomorrow. But no, certainly any training, I think that learning is a lifetime thing, and so I would agree with that.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Naway?
Yes. Continuing education for council, and, you know, there's some mandatory, but it's not mandatory for every member, but I think that it should be. As I came on council, there wasn't much of a handoff back then, as I was filling a seat, and I've done continuing education in my craft and my business, so I think it's necessary to continue to do that.
Thank you. Candidate Nash?
Absolutely. I mean, I fully believe in, you know, continuous training, learning. I think the role of Sunshine Laws are important, so that everybody knows what's going on, can participate in the conversation. I also think that, you know, truly, ethics training should be included in all that as well, so, absolutely.
Thank you, Candidate Nash. Candidate Riggins?
I absolutely agree with everyone. In fact, I got my, awarded my certificate of Sunshine Law this June before I even decided to run. That's, I just had to, because no one else on the council, except for one councilman in Slocombe, even had the Sunshine Law qualifications. And I've been studying Ohio Ethics, Robert's Rules, all that, anything I can get my hands on, I'm going to read, and I have been. And there's all kinds of courses out there to be taken, so yes, absolutely.
Great. And Candidate Cole?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with everyone, and the more you know, the better, the better it's going to be. And obviously, this is new to me, so I want to learn as much as I can and do the best job that I can.
Great. Thank you so much. And as we go through the questions, I also want to share with the individuals that are here in the room, the community, that this event, it's a little different than some of you may have been at before. So this is a forum, not a debate, and what's the difference? So, all candidates shall refrain from addressing referring to other candidates during the forum, and there'll be no opportunity for rebuttal. So I just wanted to share that as a friendly note, because we didn't mention that at this point. All right? So we'll take the next question. There, this individual from the committee says that they've lived here for five months on Main Street, and within that time, a truck took out their mailbox, and two car crashes have taken place in their yard. What plans do you have, or would you have, if you became, you know, in this role, to improve traffic safety on Main Street? So the first person that we'll start with is Candidate Krasinski.
Well, there's already a plan to make some changes to Main Street that they're working on, that's pretty close to being finalized, which should help somewhat. I think that, you know, the, one issue I have with traffic cameras is that the police don't have the presence on the roads that they used to have. And I think having police patrolling and actually on the road, pulling people over when they do something wrong, rather than giving a ticket two weeks later, I know that's a, there's economics to that that have to be addressed as well, but I think that that primarily, that it's working with the police to try to slow people down.
Thank you, Candidate Krasinski. Next, we have Candidate Hensley.
I think on Main Street, there's, there's a plan in place, thanks to those that worked on the steering committee and the master plan that addressed that. There's been grants that are applied to through...
Actually, if you want to wait for a second, yeah, we'll have you restart, so we can make sure everyone hears you. Sorry about that. All right. So Candidate Naway, sorry about that. Go ahead.
There's a master plan that's been approved and accepted. In that master plan, there are new designs and improvements for Main Street. During my time on council, as we went through the master plan, I had introduced a couple times about going after the low hanging fruit. That being, you know, crosswalks, things that we already know that, that we didn't need a master plan to do. We decided to put them off because the master plan and those on the steering committee that were present were working on those. So I think some of those will be addressed on the Main Street area between Locust Street and Riverview, Akron Peninsula and Riverview. I live on 303 myself, and I see everyone speeding and slowing down. And last week, we agreed to, we own two speed signs, not to give tickets, but to let people know what their speed is as they travel through where it's supposed to be 25, and they continue to speed.
Thank you, Candidate Naway. Candidate Nash?
Yeah, knowing the folks that wrote that question, and as a neighbor of ours, I understand their fear. It was a pretty serious wreck. There's issues relative to the speed of coming into, into Peninsula and not slowing it down soon enough. I think there needs to be some traffic calming that John's talking about, that is contemplated in the, in the, in the plan. But I also think that we need to be working more proactively with ODOT right now, to drop some of the speed limits before they come down the hill on 303, heading to the, to the west, as well as coming into town from, from west to east and east to west. So I, I think there's some other ideas that we should be working on in addition to the plan, as we, as we see how well ODOT responds to our requests.
Thank you, Candidate Nash. Candidate Riggins?
I agree with you. ODOT gets to be able to say how fast the speed limits are, not us. Even though we want them slow, we have to work with them to be able to get that done. There, there is, as Councilman Naway said, a street sign that we have, that has, you know, you go by them, and it says how fast you're going, and apparently, it's been stored somewhere for years. And if you go someplace and you see that on the side of the road, and it tells you how fast you're going, especially in a town like this where it's so busy, I believe that will slow people down, but it's something we're going to have to be proactive about all the time, because it's always been a problem. And we all know people who've gotten their mailboxes, boxes taken out, or come close when you're trying to go get your mail. So yeah, it is, it is definitely an issue that we have to keep an eye on.
Great. Candidate Cole? Thank you.
Yeah, there's an issue, and it's not just speeding on 303 and Main Street, there's speeding throughout the village. I live on Stein Road, and we have an issue with people speeding up and down Stein Road all the time. So, like Jim said, we, we need to work on getting the speed limits possibly lowered from the top of the hill coming down, instead of 45, down to a 25, and maybe moving the 25 zone all the way up past the GAR hall, and the 35 zone all the way back up to the Cogga Valley sign or something to slow people down. And I think a police presence should be, there should be more police presence than just a camera.
Great. Thank you, Candidate Cole. Candidate Frank Hensley?
Hard to answer when you have a lot of good answers in front of you. But what I would add maybe is that, an observation in sitting in council meetings, is that there really isn't a good measurement of what the problem is, how bad it is. We seem to be, in my opinion, we're very reactionary. You know, we had an accident, so we need to fix it, and I, we definitely need to fix it, but I think we need to, like, pay attention to what are, how many speeding tickets are we giving? What are, what are we doing to improve? Are we seeing improvements in it? Or we, do we need a different action to take to resolve it? So in addition to everything that was said here, I would say we need to systematically look at it and always be trying to improve it.
Great. Thank you. All right. So one of the things that would be really helpful too, is as we go through, if there's an acronym for your work, like ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, maybe, if folks don't work in that area, they may not know, so if we could also be sure to share that, so that's really helpful. All right. So our next question, "What skills do you have that would benefit our community for the future?" Candidate Naway?
I think I have skills in negotiating, working with businesses, people. I've been in the hospitality industry my entire life. Prior to starting a brewery 28 years ago, I worked for nine years with a law firm in Akron, Ohio, so I, I saw how the ins and outs of the court system worked, so I think I've got excellent negotiating skills and listening skills, and organizing those to, to move things forward.
Great. Thank you, Candidate Naway. Candidate Nash?
Yeah. Before retiring, I was 36 years in the marketing business, 29 as CEO of Marcus Thomas in Cleveland, which went from about 15 people to 250 people in North America and South America under my leadership. During that time, we were able to really manage the culture and keep what was important to us as, as a, as a community, but grow, and grow in a way that was, was responsible. Using a lot of what I've done in, in business, being on boards, both paid as well as, as charitable boards, using that knowledge that I have relative to expediting work through very complicated areas such as council and working through the village, I think I can bring a lot of leadership to that.
Thank you, Candidate Nash. Candidate Riggins?
I think, I really have an ability to hear what people are saying, and I'd like And I'd like to, like to think that I'll be able to speak for everyone. I've worn a lot of hats in my life, went and worked with a lot of different people. And I do know that I can compromise and work with just about anyone. But I think it's really important to me that I listen to you and what you want. It's not just what I want or what I feel at the time, but be a representative of everyone in this room and everyone in this town and hopefully fairly enough to go on something that I want, but something that everybody wants and a way to work around everyone to try to get on the same page with everyone close enough.
Thank you. Candidate Riggins? Candidate Cole?
Yeah, my skills, I think, I, I try to communicate well. I know I'm not doing very well tonight. I'm a little nervous. But I, I pride myself on having integrity, being honest. And I'm a team player and I want to work with the rest of the people on council to make Peninsula a good place to live.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Frank Hensley?
On the skills side, part of my job is all about facilitation. And a lot of what I do is connect dots for folks to solve problems. Through my career, I've been called upon for SWAT teams. When something really goes wrong, I'm one of the people that gets pulled in to help try and fix it. And part of that is because I have a, I'm, I'm able to, as mentioned, kind of get people to talk together, figure out what the real root of the problem is and get people towards one vision. Another thing, I don't know if you'd call it a skill, but I've been told I have a crazy curiosity. And so when I get into something, I really get into it and do a lot of research. And then the other thing that I've been told is my questions are very thoughtful and it's just a different way to listen. I do really care. And so the idea of what is important to you needs to be worked into how we solve those problems. But I do think that is a skill.
Thank you. All right. Candidate Krasinski?
Well, I was Director of Corporate Accounting for Cleveland Cliffs, a $20 billion steel company. I worked along with teams to acquire three steel companies while I was there in the last few years. Worked with the CEO, the CFO and the controller who I reported to. We used to say at Cliffs that a successful meeting was when everyone left disappointed because that means nobody got their way. And the other thing was is that we worked very hard at, at, we would, we would have our discussions and disagreements in meetings. And when we came to a conclusion, we unified and we, we all walked away with the same conclusion regardless of how we came in. I think that my experience in the corporate world, while it's a little bit different since our budget is significantly less, would, will serve the council well.
Thank you. All right. So our next question is, oh, sorry. Candidate Nayway?
Did you answer this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I answered it.
He did. Sorry, but.
I started.
I thought so. So yeah, candidate Nash, our next question, yeah. I know there's been discussion, sorry, I don't know, but someone, the person is asking you, I'm just, yeah. There's been discussion at council meetings regarding a sign in front of the village hall. What are your thoughts, yes or no, especially regarding a digital sign?
I think there's a good way and a bad way to do things. I think a glaring digital sign is a bad way to do something for a small village. I do think a sign that is easy to update and want to maintain and honestly carries the character forward of Peninsula is a great idea. I think the sandwich boards are still a good idea. You know, it's good notice, it's, it gets changed up on a regular basis. Digital can mean a lot of things. I think you really need to look at what kind of digital signs are out there because some of them aren't quite as garish as, as what some of the ones I've seen in northeast Ohio.
Thank you. Candidate Riggins?
Yes, I'm definitely in favor of a sign. Depending on what kind of sign we're allowed to have for zoning, that's something we do have to look at. Something that we can change all the time, I think it's important we can have so people know when the council meetings are going on, what the topics are going to be, at least the top topic. So when you drive by, you know it because a lot of people don't even realize what's going on because there's no way for them to know unless they get on the website or get through the administration to be sent an email. I already told Dan back there, if he changes the sign, I'll hold the ladder for him. So I will definitely be involved in helping with that if I can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, candidate Riggins. Candidate Cole?
Yeah, I agree, there needs to be a sign out front. Digital, I don't know because then I think that takes away the character and the history of the village, which we're trying to keep. Now, if they have, I'm all for the sandwich boards or a sign where you have to get up and, and change them or whatever. But I'd have to look into the digital aspect of it just because of it takes away from the character of the village.
Thank you. Candidate Frank Hensley?
I'm, I'm in favor of a sign as well. I know on, if anybody's been to the council meetings where it's been discussed, there's like, oh, it can't be up. There's all these reasons why you can't. Yet there's all these other villages or townships that have them and I know more about what's going on in another village. So I am in support of a sign. Digital, I think it, if it, if it is possible to be in character with the village. But I, I think that should be foremost and is it effective? And is it, does it fit with what are the character of the village? I do want to point out that it's, that is one issue of communication. That's a great way to communicate. Obviously, I'm assuming many people are here because of the sandwich boards. I think there's other ways also that should be put in place besides just a sign to communicate with you.
Thank you. Candidate Krasinski?
It's always great being last because everyone said everything.
You're not last this time.
I'm going to be clean up.
Okay. Well, I apologize.
You have the best answer.
We got the best answer. No, I think a sign's a good idea. I've, they've been discussing the digital sign at council. And I think it's, the question of whether it's a character of the village and the cost and whether it's economically a reasonable thing for a village with a small budget like we have, it's certainly worthy of discussion. But some sort of sign that communicates to the community what's going on makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Close it out.
In summation, if you want a sign in the village of Peninsula, you've got a good slate up here to vote for. I'm on council now and there, there's another member of council that pushed the last year or so about having a sign. And if, if you follow council, you'll know that I presented different options for signs last year. And then we let it rest for a while. We brought it back up. It was at a recent meeting last week. I think signage is good. Digital signage can become road noise as, as any signage. As you drive down a strip and you see them or you go through small towns in Roots Town, Brimfield, Mogadore, and you look at those digital signs that are, they're, they're gaudy. It can be done. My prior experience, I also owned an ad agency. As Jim worked in an ad agency, it can be done. And I think we can, we can do something that's tasteful, that mixes in, that will work. The sandwich boards work, but you know, that'll become road noise too because we'll have sandwich boards for every business in town.
Thank you, candidate Krasinski. Candidate Riggins?
Oh, I already answered it. I get the next one.
I'm sorry.
I get the new one.
Yeah.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on getting rid of paid parking?
I've talked to a lot of residents this last week and the week before and other weeks. I think it's, it's a tricky situation. I think that in front of the businesses themselves, I think paid parking is fine. I've heard a lot of people mention that when they have paid parking, you know, further up in that, they see elderly people that don't know how to work it. You see people struggling to even do it, you know, to find out. They just get so upset. I think, and it's right in front of people's houses. So I'm up in the air about it, quite frankly. I really am. I think in front, in front of the businesses, I think it's okay as we go further residential. I'm not really sure. I, I really want to hear more from people in town, what they really think before I make a judgment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Riggins. Candidate Cole?
I'm in agreement with Mo. Paid parking is good and in certain areas, it's probably not so good, like she pointed out, down the side streets and stuff in front of people's residential homes. And like the elderly not being able to, well, that goes back to the infrastructure or the sidewalks not being, you know, in good shape and crosswalks and all that other stuff. I think kind of it's an evil necessity, just like Mo said, in front of the, the businesses down there. And it's something that we need to actually look at to maybe even shrink it or, I don't want to say get rid of it totally, but you'd have to come up to some kind of a solution to make it better for everyone.
Thank you.
Not sure this is answerable in 60 seconds necessarily, but it, it is a, the basic question of what do I think of it is, it's, it is a revenue source. I'm, I'm personally not in support of it. I think it diminishes the experience for folks and it drives some behaviors that maybe we don't care for, particularly those that live near them. I'm, I'm in favor of looking at parking holistically and I know the planning commission is looking at it. Like, how do we solve it for the whole village? And then come back and figure out, is that a revenue source that we really need? And does it fit with what we want out of, out of the community? We have it at the moment. There's definitely problems that I know council is trying to improve because you do have people that, I've, I've watched so many people stare at the sign and look at their phone and try and figure out how to do it. So if we need to have it as a revenue source, it needs to be improved, is my opinion. Ideally, I'd like to get rid of it.
Thank you. Candidate Krasinski?
Well, I, I think that the revenue question has to be answered first. Like the speed cameras, the fact is, is the village needs revenue and we don't have a lot of sources. So I wouldn't want to jump to any conclusions about it. Parking is a source of revenue. In certain areas, parking maybe should be changed the way from what it is right now. And I know there's some discussion on that. I've also thought that it might make sense to have a, like a, an option for village residents to pay an annual small fee to just simply be able to be parking at any time because it doesn't seem to be fair to people who live in town that you have to pay to park, even to go visit village hall or to go to church or whatever.
Thank you. Candidate Nayway?
I agree with Frank Hensley on this. This is a multi-stage answer. But paid parking needs to go. Have you tried to use your cell phone in downtown Peninsula? You don't get a signal. So how, how are you going to pay to park? So to start with, it needs to go. The master plan needs to be a working document because in that master plan, they've worked to, to almost double the size of parking that we have now. I know there's also work to acquire other properties. The General Dykaster's property is an option, which would create parking. You know, parking's a big issue. Any new business that wants to come here, our current zoning says you have to have so many parking spaces. And, and I think you can find my quote that that needs to go out the door. If we want businesses, we need to allow them to be here without, you know, certain requirements of parking. We have to have parking, you know, for our residents in front of their homes when they have guests and places for people to go. It's a walking community, but you'll see people.
Thank you, candidate.
Take the shortest path.
Thank you. Candidate Nash? In conclusion?
Now you're clean up here this time? Yeah, it's all been pretty much said. I, I think maintaining paid parking for now as a revenue source is, is important. I mean, we, we have limited revenue sources right now. Implementing the, the master plan going forward allows opportunity for other revenue sources, additional parking to be expanded. Then you have the opportunity to probably drop that as, as you monetize other areas. I, I do think that even talking with businesses and having them, you know, pay for some of the parking as well would be an opportunity that we may, we want to look at. But more than anything, it is, it is multi-tiered and it's looking at the master plan overall.
Thank you. All right. So our next question, candidate Cole. Tell us about your experience with council meetings and planning commission meetings and if there's, if you do not already serve in one of these roles, if there's a certain board or commission that you're interested in.
Well, I'll be honest with you. Last Tuesday was the very first council meeting I've ever been to only because when I was working, I was out of town every Tuesday and I did not have the opportunity to attend one. Didn't, haven't attended any planning commission meetings or any sort like that. So, but I did plan, I didn't meet, I didn't attend the last one. And I plan to attend more in the future, obviously.
Thank you.
I call myself a frequent flyer at both planning and the council meetings. I participate pretty regularly in the citizen, the three minutes that we get, sometimes critiquing, sometimes offering suggestions. I'm happy to say that a number of my suggestions have been implemented in different ways. And the ability to participate in those have improved over the last few years. Planning, I, I was able to be on the area master plan. I go to those meetings regularly. In, if you've ever attended a planning meeting, they are more collaborative based on the format and you're able to participate more directly. And I'm happy to say that I'm a regular voice in that audience. One other thing I'll mention is that part of my past experience is I was on the Metro Public Library Board for 10 years. So I do have a lot of experience with other legal entity type things that are bound by the same laws that this group is.
Thank you, candidate Frank Hensley. Candidate Krasinski?
Well, I've attended two council meetings, the last two. And back when I was working, I retired two years ago. When I was working, it was 60 hours a week. And well, I would like to have attended the council meetings. It wasn't really a practical option. You have to be here and you can't be in downtown Cleveland. So I, it's just become, I just become, had the time come up recently. And I'm on the library board now and on the board of trustees for the Boston Hall. Boston Hall. I don't really have any thoughts about what departments or whatever. I think it'll depend on what's available. There's going to be, the council is going to be new. It's going to be, they're going to have four, well, maybe three, at least three new people on council.
Thank you, candidate Krasinski. Candidate Nayway?
Thank you for your optimism. Thank you for the endorsement.
I didn't want to throw you under the bus.
That's all right. Prior to being on council, when I moved here, I attended council meetings and I went to planning commission meetings because there were important issues. I think this is great that there's eight candidates running for four seats tonight due to the push of some current council members and those attending. I was appointed because nobody, when I went for appointment, nobody jumped up and raised their hand that I'll go serve on council. Since then, we had a couple of candidates for the last election. It was great. And then when we had a vacated seat earlier, we had people joining. So it's important. I've served on boards for the Conservancy for the Cogga Valley National Park for nine years. I currently serve on the board for the Akron Art Museum. So I'd like to continue to serve the village of Peninsula.
Thank you, candidate Nayway. Candidate Nash?
Since retiring in August, I've been to two meetings. Plan to continue to participate since I do now have the time. My expectations are if I get elected, I would just continue to help the guys that are on council right now. I agree, we've got a pretty good turnover coming on. But I think, you know, the, the council has operated at, you know, probably the best that they, they could given resources, budget, what have you. But I would hope to, to help with that.
Thank you. Candidate Riggins?
Yes, I, I attend almost every council meeting and every planning commission meeting and any other town meetings that happen to be going on. If I speak out a lot, as a matter of fact, if I don't, everyone looks shocked if I don't say something. I have noticed though that the crowds are getting smaller and smaller and smaller at our council meetings. A lot of people in this room that I see stop going because they feel disrespected and it's not inclusive and like they're, what they say doesn't matter or they've been put down and they're embarrassed. And that should not be that way. I wish we had this many people at every single council meeting, every single planning commission because everyone should be welcome and should be able to be heard of your opinions. Because this, everything that happens in this town has to do with you. So hopefully, we get enough people in there who are ready and willing to have more opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll start with candidate Frank Hensley for the next question. What is your vision for the village?
That's a great question. The, I've been so focused on the idea of the resident's voice. My vision would align with the long range plan. And if you, in the long range plan, it's about residents first. The idea of existing as a residence, residents that coexist with the national park. And so I would like to see that evolve so that there's a complementary aspect and it's not all tourists versus. and it's not all tourists versus all residents type of thing. And then probably the biggest thing would be that it maintains the quirky little character that it has. As mentioned multiple times, we either moved here or you remain living here because you love the uniqueness of what's here. So my vision would be that we preserve that as well as the historical elements. And we come up with a nice way to be economically viable, is another vision.
Thank you. Candidate Krasinski.
Well, I can't argue with economic viability. No, I think primarily that I love this town the way it is. I think that the culture, the heritage, it's a wonderful place. We're very blessed, those of us that live here. I think that, even my vision would be based on the residents. I think that, you know, we need to make sure that we maintain the village the way the residents want it, and I think that's the way it is currently. So I don't really see a lot of reason for change. There are a few issues that need to be addressed, maybe the sewer district, but it's being addressed already. So, and I read the long-range plan. I don't know whether it's finalized yet, and it seemed like it was reasonable.
Thank you. Candidate Nayway.
My vision, and I'm stealing a quote from someone else in the past, that, you know, keep Peninsula weird. It's a great place to live. My wife and I have restored, you know, the founding home of Peninsula. We celebrated its 200th year last year. My business is housed in a 250-year-old, two-city-block brewery in downtown Akron. So I love historical things. Economics, absolutely. If those that come to council meeting, speeding tickets will become unconstitutional. I'm sure of it. Our budget cannot rely on speed, and our budget can't rely on paid parking. We need to have funding. We've had great funding the last few years. If you look at our budget, it's 75% plus funded by speeding tickets and parking. So we need to find a way to stay viable.
Thank you. Candidate Nash.
So a few things. My vision really is to preserve our village's character, strengthen the historic preservation guidelines, protect the charm that John talked about, work with local businesses to maintain our authentic downtown atmosphere, you know, ensure that our development complements our community and hears the voices of the community. Strengthen our connection with the national park. Partner with them to improve visitor flow, reduce neighborhood traffic, calm the traffic, develop joint programming, use them as leverage for federal funding, balance growth opportunities when we see them to keep Peninsula special. You know, I advocate for infrastructure improvements that serve our community needs and make it better. Help execute our village master plan with community input. You know, address infrastructure needs, making sure that the roads, utilities, emergency services are appropriate for the community, and balance the growth opportunities of what makes Peninsula special.
Thank you. Candidate Riggins.
Thank you. I want to see some kids back in Peninsula. Where are the children? Maybe less short-term rentals and actual families that moved back to Peninsula. We want to keep our traditions, of course. It would be nice to have all the empty storefronts filled with stores that go along with our community, that have enough parking for that store. You have variances, sure, for parking, but all that does is just say, okay, park wherever you want. It doesn't keep it where, do you have enough room for parking in these stores? So we want to make sure that we are very careful about what, how we change and how fast we change it to make sure it goes with how we want to keep our neighborhoods. And we need neighborhoods. We all have all these little different, separate neighborhoods all over this town. Because you can see that at Halloween, for sure. So really, that's my biggest thing. I want families and kids to come back to Peninsula.
Thank you. Candidate Cole.
Well, I'm in agreement with basically everybody up here. They took everything that I wanted to say, I guess. But I do want, I feel that we need to preserve the history and grow at the same time till we are economical, economically viable. And I just want Peninsula to be able to strive and still keep the historical and quaintness of our village.
All right. So because we still have our folks from Boston Township too before eight o'clock, what we'll do is we'll give you your two minutes closing. And we'll transition into that. And so we will begin with Frank Hensley.
I just went first.
Sorry. We won't begin with you. We'll begin with candidates.
You're first?
I guess so.
Nayway.
We were first last time.
I don't know. Go ahead and go first.
Closing.
Your turn to close it.
Again, John Nayway. I'm currently on council. I've represented you for the last two-plus years. It's great to see a turnout tonight. I think there's more people here or close to the total that voted for council seats than were up a couple years ago. So I want everyone to vote, no matter who you vote for, vote on November 4th. Your voice can be heard. You can change how council is formed right now. And it's your future, and it's the Village of Peninsula. I want to represent you and be part of that and grow and work this community. We're inside the national park, so we need to work with the park. We need to work with our surrounding communities. We're a gateway to the national park. It's not going away. I've visited national parks throughout this country and see the villages that are next to them and how they operate. Some are great, some are not. I think we can be one of the great ones, and we can get benefits, but we need something in return. When Mr. Nash talked about services, you know, we provide a lot of services to everyone that visits this park, but we're paying for it in more ways than one. Financially, we pay for it, and then we have the sacrifice and loss because we're paying for it. So we need to keep that in mind. So vote November 4th.
Thank you. Candidate Nash.
Thanks for everybody taking the time to come here today. I do, I agree, everybody's, the participation makes this community work so well. I'd hope that this continues. You know, I think Peninsula's facing a lot of important decisions. And going forward, I think we all can participate in the conversation in and around the master plan to continue to evolve that, make it better. Because we do have a master plan. We all know where we're expected to go. We all can make adjustments as we move through that. It's important that everybody here has a voice, and I hope that you all continue to use it, especially in the vote coming up here for council. And being a former businessperson that has recently retired, I'd love to put my skills to work for you guys. I think that we can continue to move Peninsula forward and keep the character, keep it weird, in a way that we are all proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Riggins.
Well, Mo Riggins again. And I think you'd seen that all of us wouldn't have a problem working with each other. I think we could all work together very nicely for Peninsula. So I've heard from a lot of everybody tonight, and it's who to pick. Who's ready to serve the people of Peninsula? I am very familiar with all the short-term rental regulations. And question by question, I'm becoming well acquainted with our zoning codes. I received my sunshine laws, I said, certification in June of this year before I even decided to run. I've been studying all kinds of stuff, including Ohio ethics laws, and will keep learning every single day. I, along with Jody, who couldn't be with you, with us tonight, and Amy, attend almost every council, Planning Commission, and other village meetings that there are. We're always going to them, and we always speak up. I can hit the ground running because I see what is going on, and I don't like it. Also, as you can see, I'm not afraid to speak up. So if you decide to elect me, I will speak up for you, and you will be heard. Thank you.
Candidate Cole.
Oh, sorry. Thanks for coming out tonight, you guys. And serving on Peninsula Village Council, it's not about politics. It's about stewardship. It's about protecting the charm of our village we all love. My vision for the village is where every resident feels heard, where council operates with transparency, and where we make financially responsible decisions that secure the village's stability for generations. I commit to, I am committed to being a partner to every resident and business owner. Let's work together to keep Peninsula moving forward.
Thank you. Candidate Cole. Candidate Frank Hensley.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. This is, like, I started out, I was excited. I'm even more excited about the questions you guys have been asking. As I've been going around knocking on doors, I'm hearing a lot of, I've heard a lot of things that didn't get voiced tonight, and I believe that all of those voices matter. So if you were to elect me, I am committed to the idea of improving awareness so people know what's going on in the village, and then they can give us feedback and be part of that decision-making process. As mentioned, there are a lot of interesting, we didn't get a question about sewer today. But it's coming. Water is coming. And there's a lot of really, really important decisions to make that will possibly negatively impact the quality of life that we have here. So you have a lot of great choices, I think. I'd say do your homework, reflect. What do you, who do you want to represent you and help guide you through those decisions that are really critical in the near future? And thanks to the legal wing of the board.
Thanks. Candidate Krasinski.
I guess I get to close this out.
Yep.
I was almost first. Well, I think, first of all, thank you for coming. I'm actually quite impressed with this crowd. I think this is the most Peninsulites I've seen together in one spot in the 35 years here. I think the good news is, is that no matter who you vote for, you're going to have a good council this time. You've got great candidates running. If we were allowed to say bad things about our padres, I'd have nothing to say. I do believe I can bring a lot to the table with my corporate experience. I certainly committed to maintain the culture and heritage of the village, and I'm interested in hearing what everyone has to say. So, you know, as a councilperson, I would want to represent you. And hopefully, you'll give me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It takes a lot of work and effort to run for office and to serve our communities. Let's have a round of applause for all of our candidates. So here's what's up next, but we'll take maybe a five-minute break. Here's what we have. So if you folks would like, there were quite a few questions we didn't have time to get to because we have some folks from Boston Township up to close this out. We'll take five minutes for those who, for whatever reason, need to leave, you could leave. If you're staying for the Boston Township, we hope that you do. In addition, if you'd like to, we've invited our candidates, both from Peninsula and Boston Township, that following at eight o'clock, there'll be an informal time, if you'd like to speak to the candidates directly about questions that maybe you didn't have time to ask during, that we weren't able to get to during this time. So that's an option. All right. So because we seem to be having some challenges a little bit with this, hopefully, can folks hear me in the back okay? Yep, super. Not going to use this so we don't have more ear problems. Loud sound. So, welcome again. We are going to hear from our, one of our candidates from Boston Township. He'll have two minutes to give his opening statement. Because we don't have other candidates, it's my understanding that the league rules are that we do not take questions for only one candidate, because it's unfair to have only one person field questions. However, I will say that as soon as we're done with the opening statement, and I have a statement to be read for two of the other candidates who are not able to be here this evening, following that, we'll have an opportunity. We'll open the doors, and we'll have time for those candidates that were here from Peninsula and from Boston Township. You can speak one-on-one with folks. All right? I know you folks had a lot of good questions here that we didn't have time to get through earlier. All right? So what I will do is, how do you want, I will give you the option. Do you want to give your two-minute opening, and then I read the statement from the Andersons? Or would you like me to give it to Andersons and then you? You'll go first. All right. Well, so join me in welcoming our candidate here. Sorry, go ahead.
You can just say Ned.
All right. Ned, who?
Nick.
Nick, Nick. That's with Ned. Call me Ned, his name's Nick. All right. So we'll go ahead, opening statement. Thank you.
So real quick intro. I've moved here in 2020. I've lived here now since then. I'm on Stanford Road. My commitment, my platform, so to speak, is real simple. Number one is transparency. Today, Boston Township takes extraordinary measures to redact as much information out of the minutes as possible. It's pretty wild. I, the only reason that so much of what I've uncovered is now published online on a website, I created this because I've been able to use records requests to force a township to release information. Most of the time, I have to threaten litigation to get the records out of the township. Secondly, it's accountability. I saw the solicitor pulled up in a late-model Corvette. I think it's a great car. I don't love how he paid for it. And squandered hundreds of thousands of township dollars on dozens of meritless legal cases, none of which have had any positive return for the township. The third, and I think the most important thing for Peninsula, is public safety. I'm committed to treating our partners with respect for the hard work they contribute, and we need to rebuild trust with them. I would encourage you all to read the open letter that I wrote online. It's a Boston Township short form here. But the way that they've been treated by board members from Boston Township isn't appropriate. At best, voting to defund AEDs scares me as a 31-year-old. It should terrify anyone above that age. And lastly, development. The folks on Akron-Cleveland Road, like Rickaree through Sun Press, made tremendous efforts to bring water and sewer to the southeast portion of the township. But since that time, any development on those parcels has been in spite of the township and not because of it. We've had one business pop up, and there's been issues with the township since that's happened. So at the end of the day, I have a background in business, and I'm committed to helping develop that area.
Thank you, candidate Janigan. So we also have a written statement that was submitted by Amy Anderson and Mike Anderson as a joint statement. So I'll read that to you. "We are Amy Z. Anderson and Mike Anderson, and we're both running for one of two seats as Boston Township trustee. Amy's an incumbent with 28 years of experience, and Mike is currently serving as the Boston Township zoning inspector. Though we share the same surname, we're not related. We also share a dedication to serving the community in many capacities. Additionally, we're in agreement when it comes to priorities for Boston Township. First, we support maintaining the integrity of our remaining residential neighborhoods. Township zoning allows for bed and breakfast, but they must be owner-occupied. Neighborhoods should be families, not freestanding hotel rooms. Our zoning, especially in the village residential zone, allows residents to have incidental home occupations, which would perpetuate the neighborhood while also allowing ancillary uses. Additionally, in areas where residential properties join business properties, special consideration should be given to minimize adverse impacts. Second, we support the continued improvement and promotion of Boston Township's Akron-Cleveland Road Opportunity Corridor. This commercially-zoned area of a couple of hundred acres represents the economic future of the township. Soon, there'll be water and sewer serving approximately one-third of Akron-Cleveland Road. We must work to extend those utilities to the entire length of the corridor. While the Akron-Cleveland Road corridor has many opportunities, it also has obstacles. The developable land is not a former golf course like in Boston Heights. Our properties are often narrow bowling alley lots, which would require consolidation to make them more desirable. The bottom line is that the zoning that made sense for the township in the days before sewer and water is being revised to reflect new opportunities. Third, with increased interest in the Akron-Cleveland Road corridor and efforts to revise the zoning, the administration and enforcement costs associated with the corridor will rise proportionately. Sometimes, the only way to achieve compliance with zoning is to take legal action as a last resort. Our recent legal challenges to zoning enforcement were successful, but unfortunately, our efforts to keep billboards out of the township were not because of the lesser status of townships in Ohio law." So do I have, because it's two candidates, time to finish.
I'm okay.
Two paragraphs. You're okay with that? And we're okay with that with Lee, since it's two candidates? Okay. "Additionally, negotiating sewer and water contracts, conducting Board of Zoning Appeals hearings, and contracting with planning consultants to achieve desired zoning changes all add to a community's legal costs. In the last couple of years, the township has received spurious public records requests. One request was received written in another language and requested every email ever written in the township's in-house email system. While some legal expenses are unavoidable, we always strive to keep them as low as possible. Fourth, township residents have for decades supported the township's police levy, and we trust that they will once again. In recognition of our residents' support, we must redouble our efforts to find additional outside sources of revenue to compensate for the thousands of acres of tax-exempt land in Boston Township. We've worked hard over the years to establish joint economic development districts with both Cogga Falls and Peninsula, which..." which allows for the collection of payroll taxes for those businesses in JEDs, which again is joint economic development districts. As redevelopment of the Akron-Cleveland Road corridor progresses, additional revenue will come to the township. Even though we have an active professional relationship with the National Park Service, regarding additional sources of revenue and federal grant opportunities, roads still need repairs and road equipment needs to be updated. Snow needs plowing even on the roads that no longer have any residents. Finding resources of revenue outside the township will not be easy, but we're committed to trying. We each ask for your vote on November 4th. If you'd like to talk to us, please give us a call." All right. Thank you. So again, based on League's rules, with only one person here, we are not able to take questions. However, if you would like to stay with the other candidates from Peninsula that are still here, you can speak with folks if you'd like.
I've asked folks to questions and I have copies of the open letter up here. The longer form is posted online, which is also linked as well.
Okay, great. So with that, let's give them a round of applause, though, for taking time to come out. It is stressful to run for office and so thank you to candidate Janigan for being here with us this evening. All right. So without further ado, any closing remarks from our hosts from Legal Women Voter Akron area? Or from your hosts who, by the way, paid for this space so that their fellow community members could participate? All right. So a big thank you to Kathy and Joseph. Yep. All right. Thank you. So please, go ahead. Did you want to say anything, Joseph or Kathy, as we close? All right. Thank you so much.